Oh, it's just us chickens so far. Hey, Dani, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Good.
Evening, y'all.
Hey, Virgil, how are you?
Got any better, there'd be more of me.
See, that's how that works. Hey, Margaret.
Hi.
You can see people popping up slowly.
It is, I'm reading through some stuff.
Your fan mail?
Yeah.
Hello, everyone.
Julia.
There we go. Victor, Angie, I'm here. If you need me to do something, let me know.
Hi, Julia. Thanks for being here.
Well, the time is seven o'clock.
Did you get an email saying that the new website was a little difficult to navigate? So I got a question about the meeting link. So it's still in the same spot.
The new website did go live today.
Okay, so the meeting access information, is it still in the same type of situation?
The site was down for a little less than an hour, but it is up.
Okay.
And in the same, in the same spot as always, same page. Same way to navigate to it from the top menu.
And you can forward your email to them, too.
Let me see if I can find that.
Okay, well, you do that, and then we'll get started. We do have a forum and things to cover.
Hi.
Hi, Ann.
Have a nice meeting, y'all. I love you.
You, too. Always see what shakes out.
You never know.
You never know. Wow, we've got a lot tonight. We would have had a full house if we were inside.
I know, it's, this Zoom lets a lot of people come in like they never used to, but that's okay.
It does, indeed. Do we have Catherine or Chris?
I do not believe we do. I don't think Catherine or Chris are here yet.
Catherine is always a few minutes behind, but just the same, we can call this meeting to order. It is the town of Green Mountain Falls Regular Board of Trustees Meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 4th. Time is 7:02. If we would please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to this agenda? Seeing none, I move to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Margaret?
Oh, aye.
That motion passes. Item three is the consent agenda, which is bringing to the record the accounts payable for July 8th to August 4th. And approve the minutes from August 4th. Does anyone on the board want to bring out any one of those items for discussion?
No.
Then I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, Matt.
All those in favor vote by saying aye.
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 And that motion passes. Well, why don't we, if I would have actually put this under additions, deletions, or corrections, I'd like to see if if Catherine comes before the item of new business of discussion. But could we go ahead and discuss the proposed Trails Ambassador Program?
Sure. The five C proposed Trails Ambassador Program. Victor, can you go to that page? So Susan Davies was kind enough to put this all together for us. And she just is hoping that we can get at least three volunteers. We do have people that wanted to volunteer, not on a committee, and we've got applications. We can reach out to them. If this is a program that the Board of Trustees sees as a good thing for the town, we can certainly get this up and running and off the ground. It would definitely be something that would probably typically be managed by the Parks, New Parks, Wrecked Trails Advisory Board. But if they have three volunteers, they're willing to provide training to anybody, three to six volunteers. And then it would be, we'd have some Trails ambassadors out there working with people to improve, improve some of the challenges that we've seen as a community.
Well, I just think that program makes a lot of sense, and hopefully it will make the right positive impact that we want and help out our residents as well as visitors. I think that's been the biggest conflict. It's a lack of understanding of what, what needs to happen. So I would like to see this go forward.
So I have a question. For us to be able to have the volunteer ambassadors in the training, is this contingent on having the open space committed together, or is this something that we could possibly start sooner, depending on the timing?
If you'd like to start it sooner, staff could take, take and reach out to the volunteers that are interested in providing some of their time to see if they're interested in the specific program and being a participant in that. And then we could really get it rolling relatively quickly that way. But if y'all feel that that's a good route, or if, I think Deani was interested in working with the Parks Wrecking Trails as their liaison? As their Board of Trustee liaison?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think this is a great idea that we should definitely explore, explore because I think it's cost effective. We could see if it's going to make a difference against the community involved. And it keeps our trails open, and it keeps it moving in a positive direction, where we're not necessarily at odds with the tourists who are coming to the town while also trying to address behavioral change. So I think it's a good idea. One of the things that I was thinking about is that if this program is decided upon, it may help to try and explore some type of grant money to get volunteer t-shirts or incentives to kind of provide a little more cohesive spirit, showing that that the ambassadors, you know, showing who they are. And then also something that the volunteers could, could get in terms of their commitment for their time.
Yeah, I think that's great.
That's good.
And we could certainly also give you that list of volunteers that's interested, if you even wanted to reach out and and see who might be interested in it. I'd be happy to give that over to you, or however y'all want to see this happen.
Well, let's just decide that we want to see this move forward. I think this is a great program. And I think we should probably go ahead and start it, even not knowing if we have people on the Parks and Open Space Committee yet, just because we can, it won't take a lot of supervision.
I don't know when, when they'll be able to schedule the trainings for the volunteers, but I would say that as you know, representatives of the town, you know, I would definitely want to be involved in that training so that I could understand more about what's going on. So I would definitely volunteer for that as well.
Okay, well, it sounds like we're, we're on our way. So I would just move that we approve this as submitted and get started on the Ambassador Program.
And I'll second that. And I think I see Catherine and Chris on here, too.
Okay. We didn't just tell them. We didn't jump too far ahead, you guys. We'll still go back to 4A. So if is there any further, sorry?
Just as a quick aside, I don't, I know that we're kind of moving forward with it. Is there an opportunity for any public discussion about this particular agenda item? Or does it have to wait till the end?
You can wait till the end. I don't know that there's anything hugely controversial about, about Ambassador. Hopefully people want to volunteer and, and help.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to put that out there in case anyone, anyone had any comments to make specifically about this motion before we went through with it. But I don't, I don't know that anyone's requested to speak on this either.
All right. If there's no further comment, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
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 Score a aye.
That motion carries. So let's move back to item 4A. The item on our agenda today is the consideration of Removal Planning Commissioner Rocco Blazi. Board, I need to remind you that as we enter into this discussion, please remember this is a quasi judicial action. We're not considering what we may have heard elsewhere, or what our mayor said, or what's happened before or since. We're considering the action and letters presented, and those are not my suggestions. Those are the actions of being an official who takes up a quasi judicial role. This is not a personal attack. This is a reflection of actions that have been taken and need to be corrected. And further, this item cannot be adjudicated, cannot be adjudicated in accord of public opinion. The Board does have the right to remove volunteers from any position, and that portion is not up for debate. So please consider the letter that has been submitted. And we can continue from there. Is there any questions, Board, about that?
Um, so, yeah, again, I just had a question of, I know that there's a lot of public input about this. Will there be time for public to comment and for Rocco to comment as well?
Certainly will be time for Rocco to comment. And we can actually start with Rocco, Board, if you feel comfortable having read the letter.
I'd like to hear from him.
I would, too.
Rocco, if you'd like to speak at this time, you would need to unmute yourself and turn your video on.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, thanks. So I'd like to speak to refute these allegations, and I request this time on the floor uninterrupted. Before we start looking at the allegations, trustees and town clerk, I want you to know that I've sent four documents to you that show refuting, show evidence refuting these charges. So I'll give you a moment to check your email if you have a chance to do that. So here we are. It's gotten personal. As Mac Patron can attest, Mac, can you hear me? Hi, sir. As Mac can attest, I can agree to disagree with you about trails, but I can still engage in pleasant conversation and smile and say hello. How ironic in your summer of good neighbor that you got personal in this fabricated attack on my character. When I read the allegations, I thought, who is this guy the town manager and mayor are talking about? Well, people who know me know the guy you're attempting to portray doesn't exist. He's a fiction of your creation, town manager. So here we are at a Zoom meeting. Friday, we met with the Mayor Newberry, Town Manager, and Trustee Peterson. They asked me to resign from the Planning Commission. They failed to provide enough justification, in my opinion, so I declined. Later Friday evening, I received this letter of allegations attached in an email. The body of the email provided me the opportunity for you to save your reputation in the community by resigning quietly. Town Manager and Mayor, you fundamentally miscalculate me. You thought I would react like someone with something to hide, and I think that's more telling about your character than mine. Have I made mistakes? Sure. But let's bring these fabricated allegations out of the dark, stinking corner and into the light of day and truth and see how they hold up. I am willing to undergo your scrutiny, but I caution you, judge not lest ye be judged. Let's begin with allegation number one. Jane, Margaret, I can only assume that you saw evidence before you signed your names to these allegations. Yesterday, I submitted to the town clerk a public records information request to provide the quote unquote "conformed" reports dealing with use of the Pike's Peak Highway. Have Trails Committee been allowed complimentary access via the Pike's Peak Highway to perform trail work? Sure, we have an agreement, or we had an agreement with the Pike's Peak Highway to use that for official business. When I saw this allegation, I contacted the head Pike's Peak Highway Ranger, who I normally coordinate with. His response in the packet I sent to you trustees, quote unquote, "I do not have a recollection of this occurring." Allegation number two, abusive towards trustees in the July meeting. We've had several witnesses at the meeting. Firsthand observers, Mr. Blazi was very professional and restrained in his well-prepared comments and interactions with all in attendance. I acknowledge another input. I acknowledge that there are times when language between all have been tense, but the allegations posted, I find to be blatantly skewed and divisive, rather than coming from a place of strong leadership. Thank you, Judy Piazza. Engaged in heated argument. I can only assume that this, this charge levied against me would be in response to the Clay Gafford threatening a gun against trespassers. And for those of you who haven't heard it, here it is. So I'm a little concerned that Clay Gafford is the person you appointed to represent the town on the Park Wreck and Open Space Committee at the very next meeting with zero discussion. There's an allegation about the chipper, attempted bullying. I have emails here about the chipper. Here's an email I sent to the town manager May 26th. For at least one proposed chipper location, I advocate for the street right-of-way in front of 11255 Belvedere Ave. for the following reasons. There's ample room to operate the chipper and dump truck. This is a convenient location for me to haul the slash collected from Scott Ave. right-of-way. The property owner has shown commitment to creating defensible space on the six-acre tract. Neighbors can be encouraged to expand mitigation efforts in this dead-end canyon environment. I got a reply the next day from the town manager, parking the chipper in front of Scott Eusman's house could be perceived as giving a neighborhood or single citizen preference. Totally understand. End of discussion. Although we do have input from Mr. Eusman, a respected trustee who was responsible for saving the Sally Bush Building. Per Mr. Eusman, "I was a witness to these conversations, and in no way, shape, or form was he trying to bully her or otherwise be rude." In fact, the town manager was the rude one. Continuing on, "This type of behavior is very typical of the town manager, and she displays it consistently." Ultimately, let's go no further than your own words, town manager, from the June 16th fire mitigation discussion at the trustees' meeting.
And I'd like to thank Rocco for putting that bug in my ear about working on organizing that event. There's a lot of the way to work with a women park facility to give a donation over there, and it was helpful, so. We should work together on that. That's great.
So town manager, is this how you respond to alleged bullies? Or would you care to retract your unfounded accusation? Let's move on to the June 24 Zoom meeting. I submitted a public information request for the Zoom recording, but received the response that it was a conference call, not a public meeting, and there's no recording. Well, the only other impartial observer would be the town marshal. I don't know if he's in the meeting. I'm not going to put you on the spot, but I will ask, Marshall, would you care to comment at this time?
I will comment without a comment due to the fact that my position and my job has carried nothing but fact finding and proof of allegations, which, if I was to comment on my own personal opinion, would be inappropriate during this venue or any other venue outside of the subpoena and directed to a court, which would not accept my opinion as any type of fact finding.
Thank you, Marshall. I just find it interesting that you were asked to attend as a witness, and I appreciate your time, sir. Ultimately, it seems that the town manager doesn't understand the difference between discourse and bullying. If she does understand, then she chooses to mischaracterize her interactions at the defamation of others' character. Allegation three, the open meeting violation, open meeting law violation. In April, the three planning commissioners discussed via email to nominate the only two applicants at the time to fill the two planning commission vacancies. I admit, we made a mistake. We fixed it. It hasn't been a problem since. The first sub bullet of that allegation, I don't recall the jail comment. If said, maybe it was a bad joke. Either way, if it was said and you took it seriously, it should have been addressed immediately. That's the problem when you save up alleged misdeeds to create larger intrigue. I can't say after four months. So what's happened in that time? Oh, yes, I tried to defend the voting rights of the town's trail committee. I pointed out parliamentary misbehavior and improprieties with a problematic ordinance. It's interesting that this comes to light now. Second sub bullet. It's fully within the responsibilities of the chair of any town committee to determine agenda. The proposed legislative item specifically affected the planning commission, and it was certainly appropriate for the planning commission to agendize this item. Some questions here. Why did the staff recommend against inclusion of this agenda item? Why weren't affected committees afforded the opportunity to comment prior to the expense of legal review? Were you trying to stifle discussion among the affected committees? Trustees, is this acceptable to you? All of this lack of coordination and communication on the town manager's part brings into question the lack of transparency regarding ordinance 202003. Third sub bullet, a general lack of communication, failure to bring trail plans through public process. Were none of you at the April 7th trustee meeting? It was on the agenda. It's in your minutes. I typed my choppy handwriting as it pertains to this, and it's in your packet. Specifically. Looking ahead, priority two will change the name to Pittman Trail. Historic Green Mountain Falls Foundation has purchased the property, and Mile High Youth Corps is scheduled to construct the majority of this three quarter mile trail in August. Trails Committee will support the effort by laying out the trail where it goes and providing technical advice. The Trail Committee plans to allocate at least one of this season's work dates to this effort. We hope to have the trail ready before the snow falls later this year. Of note, the trail alignment will make use of the 40 foot High Street right of way near El Paso behind gazebo lake. The trail will climb Red Devil Mountain to link gazebo lake area with Joyland Buildings to Green Mountain Falls Road near Fountain Creek. The next slide will show the area where the trail will be, and there's a map with with a circled area. So there's a mention about trail plans. I don't know what this means. Are you holding us accountable for a process that doesn't exist? Town manager, you were at the April meeting. Why wasn't this addressed then? Jane, Margaret, you were there too. How could you sign off on this allegation? You are attempting to hold individuals and groups accountable to a non-existent process when you yourselves need to be held to account. I think the most troubling of all in this accusation is the deflection of blame regarding restrooms, parking and signage. The mayor chose to keep public restrooms closed citing a moral issue. That's equally indefensible for what is moral about visitors relieving themselves around our community. This is an utter abrogation of responsibility and damning evidence of your own management failure, which leads me to the bridge. I can't think of a more apt metaphor, and I can't resist. Secretary, please include this in the minutes. While there may be some in the world who have a knack for burning bridges, I will proudly align myself with the bridge builders in this community. It seems to me there's some jumping to conclusions of some perceived treachery involved. It indicates a certain cynicism where the first instinct is to run and document perceived misdoings instead of creating meaningful dialogue. Don't you believe there's people who want to do good works and contribute meaningfully to their community? It seems to me the people who drafted and signed these allegations have a much different worldview, which I believe is detrimental to the effective governing and management of our community. Long story short, a deficiency was found. It was corrected with something safe and sustainable. And if I might add, it's quite beautiful to an exemplary standard well within the scope of the Trails Committee when it existed. I think bureaucracy has its place. I also think common sense fixing a safety issue has its place. Mac, let's take a hike and see if this meets spec. I'd be happy to arrange the time with you. Joyland property trail plans already addressed. You were briefed in April. End of story. Property disputes. Yesterday, I submitted to the town clerk a public record request to provide specifics where property disputes were supposedly brought to my attention. Jane, Margaret, did you see this evidence before you signed the allegation letter? Disregarding requests from the town manager. This resounds the most with me as I'm currently rereading the novel Catch 22. So the ordinance to disband the Trail Committee 202003 took 30 days to take effect. You went the extra distance using taxpayer money for legal review to implement resolution 202013, suspending all Trail Committee meetings and activity. No individual may act in the capacity of a member of either the Trail Committee Advisory Board. Anyone claiming to be acting on behalf of either group shall be acting without authorization and beyond the scope of his or her authority. Per your very own resolution, I couldn't reply to you, town manager. Lack of transparency. Lack of budgeting oversight. What budget? The Trails Committee accomplished all its good works at no cost to the taxpayer. We didn't have a budget. Meetings. This comes from our secretary Rebecca Ochkai. This letter concerns Rocco Blazi and his handling of the Trails Committee over the last several years since I have been the recording secretary of said committee. Every Trails Committee meeting has been held at the same place and time, Muckey Duck Conference Room, 6:00 PM, second Tuesday of the month. This has been publicized on each Trail Committee Minutes Report and Agenda. If any report or agenda was not received on time, it was either a result of my inefficiency or turnover at Town Hall positions. There were many times when I delivered minutes or agendas on time that did not get posted. I am unaware of any withheld documents as Mr. Blazi has gone out of his way to be transparent in all aspects of the Trails Committee. These allegations border on libelous. I'm concerned that this persecution of Mr. Blazi is a personal vendetta against an honorable man. All democratic governments should be able to withstand criticism without eliminating dissent. Nothing prohibited meetings outside Town Hall. These allegations, it sounds like a committee running amok. Where were you, town manager? Where were you trustees to address a supposed known problem that had gone on time after time? You weren't there because it didn't happen. Planning Commission meetings. Yesterday, I submitted to the town clerk a public records request to provide specifics where I excluded documents from planning commission meetings. I have not received a response. This is a truly bizarre charge, as echoed by the response of our former planning commission chair, Eric Cactus Caldwell. That's crazy. Our current town planning staffer says, my guess is this statement is invalid. This points to really inadequate research and staff work on the part of the author, especially when your stated goal was to affect my reputation in the community. Town manager, you should have known in your in your capacity that my position on the planning commission never carried the authority to exclude documentation. You need to understand that defamation is a false statement presented as a fact that causes injury or damage to the character of the person it is about. You have opened our town up to a defamation of character lawsuit. My personal opinion, you need to look for employment elsewhere. I think this is also officially marks the end to the farce that was the summer of good neighbor. Now let's address the second to last paragraph. In my opinion, the town manager is pursuing a personal vendetta at her own admission, costing the town hundreds of hours and many more dollars. This drain of effort, resources and money adds up to really poor management of our community infrastructure. This agenda has obviously been in the works for some time, and you disrespect not only me, but our entire community with this fiscal irresponsibility. Before I close, I'd like to thank the community for their outpouring of support. You have eased my burden, knowing that I wasn't alone in fighting injustice. A huge thank you to my wife and son for bearing the toll of this stress to our family and for knowing the husband, father and man I am, and for pushing me to refute these allegations. Trustees, it seems like you're asking the wrong person to resign. I call for a full public retraction of these allegations.
All right, board. Now this is for board discussion. You've heard Mr. Blazi. You've also read the letter. Margaret, do you have any statement?
Um, I do, but I'd kind of like to hear what the other trustees think about this as well.
All right. Catherine, are you on? I haven't seen you yet. Maybe it's just my computer.
She was, but I don't see her here in the list right now.
All right, then I'll go with Chris Quinn. You still on?
I am. I was trying to find a little mute button. So. You know, I entered in here kind of with a blank slate, not kind of knowing. You know, a lot of this is, seems like it's some rather ongoing stuff, and you know, I'm not. You know, I'm willing to abstain from this vote on this because a lot of these things are, I can't wrap myself around. I would say that. You know, perhaps there were regularities that I heard about and procedure and things like that, and some missteps were acknowledged. You know, I I I'm kind of still trying to digest all the stuff in here. A lot of it does appear to be kind of. I don't have any any backup on what's in here, but I have heard from various people in town through emails and the stuff that's been submitted here. You know, I'm not seeing any. At this point, I'm not really sure what to do here, but I'm not seeing a real need for removal, but that is coming from a place of, like I said, you know, I don't have a lot of history on what's going on here, even through the years. I can see the points that Rocco is making in refuting this, and you know, I think just tensions are high is my, it's kind of a feel I get on that too, and you know, I I know that in the past few years, the town's had a lot of rough patches, and we've made mistakes, and everyone's kind of trying to figure out things, and you know, I can I can kind of forgive some of these acknowledged missteps and whatnot, because I think, you know, from what I hear, they have been they have been rectified. Regarding a lot of this other stuff, I'm really not knowledgeable enough, the bridge kind of thing. I don't I don't know that there was a place for review on that. I'd have to kind of research that a little more, but you know, in its face, I think. You know, I I just don't have enough of the the allegatory information to make an informed decision in those respects. So I kind of sit back and listen and see what, you know, others have to say. I haven't quite made my mind. But as I said, I would abstain if, you know. I can't read the allegations, and I can't understand, you know, the rebuttal from Mr. Blazi, so I'd just like to hear what everyone else's thoughts on this.
All right, that sounds fine. Diane?
Yeah, so I just have a question for Mr. Blazi. I saw in our packet that we were sent that you submitted a volunteer application, and on the application, it said that it says, we'll step down by August 1st, 2020 of the GMF Planning Commission. It was an application for the Parks Rec and Trails Committee. So I just wanted to hear your thoughts behind that statement where you stand now. I just want to hear more from you about that.
Sure. So I submitted that in time before the last committee meeting, and it wasn't addressed, so I'm just kind of standing by.
All right, Catherine back. She has some connectivity issue, I think. Oh, there she is, Catherine. Can't hear you. I still, yeah, I've got nothing, Catherine. Can you hear me at all? Yeah, I got nothing for you.
She can hear everything and see everything, and she's trying to talk, but for some reason, some reason, her audio is not coming through.
All right. Um, I don't know what to do about that, since she shouldn't have the chance to wait. Um, I don't know what to do about that, since she shouldn't have the chance to weigh in. Margaret, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah. So, you know, regarding all of the, the people that have, that have risen to Rocco's defense. And truthfully, for me, this is not personal, and I'm sorry that you feel that it is personal, Rocco. Um, but even the tone of the emails, I understand that people are trying to be supportive, and they're passionate. But actually, the passion is coming across as being bullying and intimidating. And. You know, I mean, words like childish, childish, pettiness, disappointed, we're tyrants. Petty, disgusting, should be ashamed, ashamed of all of us, political bullying. Um. You know, where do you draw the line on what's okay and what's not okay? You know, because, because it's our job too, we're all officials here, and we represent the town. And. I just, I just don't feel like. We need to have this ugliness. One of the, one of the statements that really bothered me, and I've got, I don't know if I've got a different opinion of it right now. But there was a statement called coerced resignation. But Friday, the statement that you made, and this is prior to me knowing that you had, that you had put an application in. I thought that you were planning on putting an application in. But your statement was you offered to resign if appointed to the open space committee. To me, that came across as a quid pro quo, pro quo. I can't say that word. Um. And maybe it's because I didn't know that you had already put the application in and indicated that on your application. But it just didn't feel like it was the right thing to say. And personally, I'm willing to accept responsibility for allowing the behavior that's happened to this point. You know, I'm willing to accept responsibility because we have allowed it to happen. We've made requests for different things. And, and one example, one specific example that I have, it's, it's from the former trails committee. And in July of 2019, the board requested for quarterly trails reports, and the response was, we'll give you twice yearly. And we accepted that instead of saying, no, the board, this is what we want. So I'm willing to accept that responsibility because we allowed it to happen. Um, but at the same time. I feel confident that the documentation that was reviewed by the town attorney regarding the allegations. And. The attorney's confirmation to uphold approval from, removal from the board is justified. And we need to get away from this culture that's been happening, and it's not just you, Rocco. It's, it's a culture that has happened. For quite a while, and it's like we've allowed people to ask for forgiveness instead of asking for permission. We've created that culture, and, and we need to work on changing it. Because there are certain things that do need to brought forward. That beautiful bridge, it's beautiful. But it didn't go through anything at all. When I, when I first saw about that, I thought, oh, did we approve that? I don't remember that ever coming for approval. Um, and it has nothing to do with, with the need for the bridge, it's just going through the proper channels. And I think those are the things that need to happen. And I'm thinking sometimes too. When you're involved in more than one committee that really works closely together. I think sometimes it's kind of hard to see where you know what's going on, but other people don't know what's going on. And. I know there have been issues in the past with the board feeling blindsided by, by issues that were brought to their attention almost too late. So. I think that's where part of it is, and just. Oh, gosh, just our. Our town staff. You know, they don't need to be bullied, they're doing what they can, and they're doing their job, trying to make sure that we're all following the law. And. You know, I think we all make mistakes at times, but we need to be willing to work, move forward. And there are times that I don't believe that that willingness to move forward with the board was sought. So that's, those are my thoughts right now.
I would agree with that. I would agree with those statements, Margaret. Especially when you think about. The board at times felt like. The planning commission was the tail wagging the dog. You know, we appreciate help and we appreciate volunteerism. But some things that were put on the agenda were, were done late, were done out of order. That in itself is an open records problem. There's no doubt that taking a, a vote or a poll by email is an open records violation. It was corrected later, however, it leads people to question if other things are being done. Via email, it's a. It's a perception, and there's a perception that there was a disregard for those rules. You know, I understand that. That people support you and love you, and they should. I mean, you've been a good volunteer for a lot of years. However, there's definitely been. Attitude, and I have seen it towards the town manager. And some of the statements that have been made have been construed as threatening, and. And they were, and it's, it's unfortunate. But it doesn't give me a lot of heart that in this volunteer position, that anything would get better. The board itself can remove a planning commission member for inefficiency, neglect of duty, or malfeasance. And in the letter that was presented, all three of those items are, are represented. And the most grievous of which to me is the Open Records Act violation. And while some people truly feel that open records is almost passe or silly. It's one of the most important records that, that any government can have. That's actually why we're here today. Because I don't think anyone wants to air what they consider to be dirty laundry. But we do this in open meetings so that people have the opportunity. To see how the, how things work and how things are. For myself. I feel we've gone down a road. That doesn't have a good ending. We're in a place where. People are issuing demands and really calling a lot of volunteers unjust names, including those on the board. That's fine, I can deal. But I don't think our staff should have to deal. If it were an employer employee situation, this would be labeled hostile work environment. And I will say this, and I've thought about this a lot. These allegations. Were brought, were substantiated. In the past, I feel some things like this have kind of just been pushed aside, saying, oh, that's so and so's personality. But I know for myself, that if I would have done the same thing here and just said, oh, that's not what was meant, that was misconstrued. And I'm just as culpable. And I cannot support our employees feeling that they come to work in a hostile environment. Board. There is a decision to be made about removing planning commissioner Rocco Blazi. I would suggest that he is removed, however, with this caveat. That in six months, he is eligible to reapply for any position, and we would consider it as we would consider anyone else. I have not made a motion, and we'll make that into a motion. Is there a second?
With, with that motion, I guess if that were to pass, would he still be able to work with all of the groups in a non, nonofficial capacity?
Absolutely, absolutely. We'd just not be a board member on any of those committees. And in fact, the reason I would suggest that we have a six month break is honestly that so all involved, all involved. Have time to consider. And learn and heal from this, because I don't think anyone has taken any of this lightly. I know I haven't. We know Rocco hasn't. This is, this is something that we've considered very seriously, but he would certainly be able to come to meetings, participate. I would highly recommend that he stay involved with his friends of the trail committee. That's, that's where that's at.
I mean, I see coming on to this board, what I see is a big shift with our, I guess, our, our leadership trying to. Update some of the procedural processes that have happened in the past to be compliant with California, or, because, sorry, Colorado law. And there being, you know, sometimes just simple mistakes and misperceptions. But that law needs to be followed. And so I think it would be helpful if, I know we've, we've gone through that, that, that SIRS training. But I think it would be really helpful just to get in plain words also, when we're starting up these new committees. What's acceptable, what's expected, so that everyone starts off on a good foot. And that we don't have these issues come up either inadvertently or for whatever reason.
I would agree, and those, there are very easy to follow documents available through Colorado Municipal League. They've done training for us before as well, that SIRS has done training. So I agree, I always think, and everyone should take it, I don't care how many times you've heard it, it's always good to have a review. On open records. So there is a motion on the table.
Okay, I'll second it.
Board, do you have further discussion?
Um, I'd just like to say, and I respect all of the comment and all the engagement by everyone, the board. And all the town, town people and staff, and I think on this, on this point, I will abstain.
Right. Thank you, Chris, I appreciate, I appreciate it.
Um, I. Whoops, there's Catherine.
I can hear Catherine with an echo.
Is that any better? Not really.
Kind of disco Catherine.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Very good.
And now I can.
I'm just trying different computers.
Right there is good.
Okay. Yeah, I apologize. And. Yeah, this has been. Really difficult, and it's, it's saddening. I'm so appreciative of. The, the work that. That Mr. Blazi's done, I'm, you know, that he's, he's inspired people to volunteer and, and help out in the community. I mean, you know, these are, these are, he's, he's really been a valuable asset, and I hope he continues to be a valuable asset to the community. And. You know, I respect that we have to. You know, follow procedures, and there's reasons why there are rules and procedures. And. It may not always seem convenient or efficient to follow procedures. But. You know, I respect that that's what we really have to do to keep ourselves legal, above board. And. Transparent, so. I know this isn't easy for anyone. And I appreciate. You know, all the input. From everyone. So. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, I echo that, it's always important. It's always important that people participate in these processes, it's always important people, when people come out. And support their friends and coworkers. Board, the motion on the table, I'll repeat, is to remove planning commissioner Rocco Blazi, but allow him to. Reply in six months, and we would consider that position, that has been moved in seconded. Chris is going to abstain. All those in favor, but we're saying aye.
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 That motion carries. Item 580, old business website demonstration, new town website goes live, make sure that is yours.
Hi, everybody. Well, we all got to see the new website go live, which was kind of awesome in a weird way. But yeah, the whole new website's ready to go. I'll give you guys a little demonstration of some of the parts that are, some of my favorite, and some parts that I really like, and all that good stuff. Basically, the biggest thing is that it's been really visually updated. So let me show you. So as you can kind of already see, the new logo's there, and everything's kind of just been polished a whole bunch. We've got more pictures, the first picture's the same, because it'll help everybody feel like the familiar train when they first show up. But we have pictures just from all over the place, somebody posted this one, and a bunch of volunteers. We're just submitting pictures all over the place, and Greenbox helped, and there's a picture of the wedding now. So that's kind of cool, things have been polished up to just kind of look, look more official and more modern. Some of the wording's been redone too. One example would be like our contact page now, originally, it was just this really long list. But now it's kind of been organized a little more neat, has a little map on it. This is also where all the credits are for all the people who posted pictures, submitted pictures, and volunteered to help out, which is awesome. Um, everything's basically just been, been updated in that sense, some of the wording's a little different, pictures everywhere. Some of the stuff that was outdated, there was a few tabs that were a little old that were taken out, a few tabs. That were kind of brought into the most recent information, like with fire restrictions and stuff. But yeah, one of the, two of the more notable things that will still come is we're planning on having. Everything on the entire website be a fillable form. So what that basically means is we can go totally paperless, like people will just click on the form, they'll type their stuff in, they'll save it, and they'll email it in. You know, we'll just be another step closer to saving as many trees as we can, and that'll be awesome. I really like the new gazebo rental page. There's just more pictures of our gazebo on there now and they're a little bit bigger so that people who are looking to use the gazebo just kind of have a better understanding of it rather than the old website. It was just like one small picture. Now we've got a few bigger ones. Um, and we'll also, one thing that'll be cool is it'll, it's still, we still have to bring them all over. But we are going to start keeping a lot of the ordinances and resolutions right here too. That way, instead of having to, originally you'd have to go to municipal code and kind of go to like the big grand government website to get the information. And it was also a little slow just because of the whole process. But now everything will just be on our website too. So as soon as something happens, someone will just be able to go to the website and kind of see what was passed, which will be really useful. Um, everything is still for the most part in the same, the same order. The, the budget's still here, the board of trustees and the minutes, it's the same place. One other thing that'll be pretty useful is, um, just kind of a smaller announcement, but we've decided to, to start making all the BOT meetings on YouTube. There's videos for public record because they're already a public record, but we've decided just to put a link here. That way people can just go straight to the videos as well. That way they don't have to ask. It's just another, just another resource, just like the ordinances and the resolutions. So I really hope that everybody likes it and that it's super useful. And I'm super appreciative for all the really cool photo submissions that we had and I'm excited to see just has, see how the website continues to evolve. So, but yeah, that about sums it up for the most part. And it's also really nice too because, uh, everything will really help with transparency too. Just like with the whole, the ordinances and the resolutions and the fillable forms and everything. It'll just really help it be more streamlined for everybody. So, uh, websites can be hard to use, but hopefully this website's even better now. So, yeah, thank you.
Victor, could we see the very bottom of that page? Thank you.
All right, Victor, thank you. That, that's great. That's going to be a good new website. 5B is Advisory Board Membership Applications. Four of these have been submitted. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at them yet and we don't need to make a decision quite yet. We do and we don't because we also have other communities who expressed an interest and haven't submitted an application yet. So, um, what we can do is we could put two people on parks and rec and open space so that they have a quorum and then revisit when the rest of the applicants come in or give them a deadline at least. I can hear people howling. It's howling hour. I hope you can hear that from your own too. I don't know, Board, what you're thinking about, um, that process. I would however suggest that Goody Goodman, who applied ever so long ago and then his paperwork got lost, be considered. Also Don Walker, Sean Eysen, Todd Dixon are already on Planning Commission. But, um, the rest of that is up for discussion and even up to any including, do you want to wait for the rest of the applicants to come in and do we want to set a deadline or do we just want to leave that open until filled? So, Tiani, what do you think?
Um, so I, we would need a quorum in order to go ahead with starting any type of meeting. I don't know of the people who had expressed interest, how many of those had expressed interest in parks, back to trails and open space? That would be helpful to know. You know, if we did extend it, I would say that it shouldn't be a huge amount of time because I think there are things that need to be discussed in order to move forward.
I would agree with that.
Is it only two for a quorum or three?
Three. And you have Clay Gafford already on.
Because we've got Clay. I agree with Goody, Goody's application because like you said, he had applied like back in January or something and the paperwork was misfiled. Um, so.
So are you nominating Goody to be on?
I'm going to nominate Goody for, oops, I'm sorry Victor, I'm trying to get the stuff to move and it's not. So.
Board, may I speak on this item? This is Dick. Can you, can you hear me?
I did.
Yes.
Okay. Victor, you wrote a nice memo, but there's a couple of problems. I'm listed for fire mitigation, which is certainly my interest. But I also applied for Parks and Rec twice in 20 July, 2017, right after the ordinance was passed establishing the Park and Rec Committee, the original ordinance. Then I applied again 28 July. So I'd like to have my hat in the ring for Parks and Rec.
I sure wish we could have this discussion in person. This makes it harder.
If you're going to extend anyway, how about extending Parks and Rec until you can get all of the applications together?
Oh, and I, I don't disagree with that. Um, we were actually just talking about making a quorum of three and then they could work on selecting the other two. That way, Tiani could get started with the Trails ambassadors. So Board, if you feel all right, we're just putting two on, we could go ahead and do that tonight and then accept more applications for, um, what, next, next month? At least then the Trails would have a quorum.
And then this is a little more time to review.
What, Margaret?
I said, that just gives us a little more time to review.
Yeah, because we haven't had much.
How many members are on the PRT?
Five.
Okay, that's what I thought. And Mr. Bratton, would you be, would, would the, uh, the PRT also be in addition to the fire mitigation or in lieu of?
Well, it'd have to be one or the other by our new ordinance, but.
Okay. Sounds like it's PRT then, not.
Although if you signed up for fire mitigation too, then we have other openings. But, you know, this could go any way. Um, anyway, Tiani, what do you think about having, just putting two on there tonight and then we'll get some more applications or finish up what we're doing?
Yeah, I mean, we, we have the applications of the people who submitted already. I think, you know, that we've gone through and appointed one based on an application. I think if we're doing first come, first served, then we should review these and appoint two holding spots for the remaining applications.
Okay. You ready to do that tonight?
Yeah, that sounds, sounds fine to me.
If I'm paying attention, I think I am. So Goody did apply back in January and Margaret has nominated him to be on PRT and I would second that. Board, all those in favor, but by saying aye.
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 Press quiet, aye.
Catherine, aye.
I heard you that time Catherine. So Goody Goodman is now on the PRT. So it's a, we want to put a second for another person on there in order to, um, get to quorum and then we can choose the other two later. Tiani, do you have anyone in particular you would want to nominate?
So of all the remaining applications, I do feel like it would be very important to have and retain that institutional knowledge from the prior Trails Committee. So I see two people on, who have applied. Three, if you also include Mr. Bratton. I don't know if he's leaning more towards fire mitigation or Parks Rec. But there are three people who have a lot of experience with the Trails Committee in the past. I think having that experience and that institutional knowledge is very important to retain that and move forward. You know, Rocco has been very, very instrumental in a lot of these, the, a lot of the work that's been done with the Trails. I understand that, uh, with open meeting issues, um, that, uh, those still need to be, uh, very much accounted for in starting a new committee. But I do recognize the fact that he has a lot to give. I am wanting to propose the idea of having him come on, onto the Trails, Parks, Rec, Trails and Open Space Committee in a capacity where he would not be the one responsible for setting the agenda and posting the minutes. All the things that have been kind of an issue in the previous discussion, but he's still able to participate. So it's just something I like to put out there. I also saw that Judith Piazza has had some experience with the Trails Committee before. Mr. Bratton has had a lot of experience with the Trails Committee. So those would be the three that look to me like they have the most experience from that aspect of things.
Yeah, I would, I would concur with that line of thinking anyway. Um, you know, no, no, no deference to Mr. Walker. I would like to see some, you know, some of that continue on through this kind of reiteration of a, you know, of those responsibilities. And I, you know, I, in light of what previous agenda items, you know, I would, you know, I, I thought I was very thoughtful of you, Danny, for, uh, kind of putting the, uh, kind of framing, having Mr. Blasi, um, on this, uh, committee. You know, I would also support Mr. Bratton just because like you said, there's lots of knowledge there that is, could be very instrumental in getting things off the ground. Right, you said.
I appreciate it. Catherine?
Is Clay Gafford already on the committee?
He is.
May I speak? Asking permission to speak Judith Piazza.
Judith, you may.
It might help make the decision because I, I actually have no desire to be on a committee with someone who was not responded to quickly and affirmatively for his threat. I don't want to be on a committee with somebody who threatens with a gun. And so I have actually volunteered to be with parking and signage and I would prefer that so that might help you make a decision. I don't know how Clay was appointed to this committee because there is, I've not heard any discussion around how that happened, but I just want to say that would be my boundary that I don't want to be on a committee with somebody who threatens with a gun.
All right, thank you. Um, and then we have Donald Walker.
I have. Can I ask a question, Jane?
Yes.
This is, this is Ann. Um, all the committees, you know, the new things that you're creating, uh, which is great. These all require, uh, to be on the committees, someone who actually resides in Green Mountain Falls. Isn't that right?
To be a voting member. Anyone can attend and participate, but to be a voting member, they do need to live in Green Mountain Falls.
Okay, so I, I was just going to kind of mention to Dick that he was so interested in fire mitigation. I'd hate to see him not do that if he has to choose. So I thought I'd just say that. So thank you. Bye.
Thank you. All right, Board. I've heard what you're saying. My gosh, my animals are going crazy tonight. Hold on just a minute. Margaret, can you take over for just a minute, please?
Sure. So. So my thought, I'm wondering, Board, is, um, because we have other applicants that are, that are in the works, um, do we really want to fill this board completely tonight? What are your, what are your thoughts?
Well, I'd like to at least get three on there to, to get us rolling. I think that was a, you know, a reasonable idea. And then vet the rest of them when they come in and fill the rest of this board.
I'm looking, I'm looking through the packet here, looking and reviewing the applicants one more time. So. And I guess the, the other question to ask is people that are willing to volunteer for, for this particular board, which I'm so pleased because we've been working for quite a while to get this board up and running. So I'm so pleased that there's a number of applicants here. But I think the other question would be maybe we need to reach out for the other applicants that possibly aren't chosen as they come in to see what other interests they may have or to see what other skillset they may have. So, um, and I just, Chris, I like the, the idea of, of getting the three for the quorum so that we can really start moving forward with Tiani to, um, to be able to, to get the, the Trails Ambassador working. So, Tiani, your, what are your thoughts on that?
I think that it'd be helpful to have three going forward of the people who are, are, have applied. It looks like Mr. Walker, Mr. Blasi and potentially Mr. Bratton are, are the ones that need to be reviewed. Again, I, I think having institutional knowledge is really important. So I would not be averse to having Mr. Blasi join the, the committee with the caveat being that he would not be in the position where he would be the one submitting the things required for the open meetings, uh, regulations to be intact and that we do get really good training on what some of the things are that will keep us in compliance with that. I also wanted to check and see if either Mr. Walker, Mr. Bratton or Mr. Blasi wanted to speak about their application. I don't know that they, either of them have had a chance to do so, so that might help.
That's, that's a great suggestion. So. Is Mr. Walker on the meeting? He's, he's the, the person we know the least about, so maybe we'll let him go first if he's on the meeting.
I'm not seeing the list, but there are a few phone numbers here. Mr. Walker, if you would unmute yourself and, if you are on. Or if you're having troubles, you could certainly message the host in the chat.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I'm not one of the three candidates. I'm Dory Guyan. Could I make an important point right here?
Yes.
I think you have missed a very important point that you will not be able to have a quorum of three because by your own statement that Mr. Blasi was let go because of his threatening behavior in one main reason because Mr. Gafford has. because Mr. Gafford has been heard by so many people to be threatening all hikers and residents with a gun, with a weapon. I'm sure you're going to have to let him go from the committee because that kind of behavior can't be on one committee and not on another.
No, you, you have a point there. People keep talking about Clay Gafford over and over and over. And I would strongly suggest with the statements that Mr. Blazi has made and the disparaging remarks he's made about him, that perhaps they shouldn't be on the same committee. I would like to, I agree that we need institutional knowledge. But at this point, I'd like to see Donald Walker nominated to be on that committee. Is there a second to that? All right, seeing none. Oh, Margaret?
I'll second, because, because going by the application dates too, his application was an earlier application.
Well, if you're, yeah, that makes sense. And I think that would give, if we have Donald Walker on there, it would give us an opportunity to review both Mr. Blazi's and Mr. Bratton's applications. And it would also give a chance for other applicants to come in. And perhaps we can field a committee that will have a good working start together. We have a first and a second. All those in favor vote by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Well, that motion carries. Let's move right along. And we're still accepting applications for all open committees. I am, let's see, we did item five C. What is item six? I can't get back to my agenda. There we go. Public input. This is for items not listed on the agenda. Please limit it to three minutes per speaker. Board, I would remind you that this isn't an opportunity for us to reply. However, we can refer items to the staff or to put on future agenda. So Victor, are you handling that tonight?
Yes, yes, I am. I'm pulling.
All right, let's have public input.
The first person on the list is Kathleen Morrow. Please state your name and address for the record. You will have to unmute yourself.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are.
Okay, Kathleen Morrow, 10965 Belvedere. And it's, I'm, I'm about the Garden of Eden Bridge on the Catamount Trail. Fifteen years ago, my husband, my former husband Steve, noticed how difficult it was for hikers to get across the creek just past Garden of Eden. So he gathered fallen logs and he built a structure to help people get across. Over the years, with storms and high waters, it broke apart. And when I was there this last spring, I watched hikers really struggle to get across that bridge. And I saw a dog slip off the bridge and fall in the water. It scared me. So I mentioned it to Rocco and the Trails Committee, my concern that someone could get hurt crossing those locks. A month or so later, Don Walker started building a bridge in his garage to replace it. And then four or five strong men on the Trails Committee tractored it, a trailer did it up to the top of the trail, hauled it by hand down to the Garden of Eden and installed it. It was beautifully built and is very, very strong. If you've seen pictures, it's quite incredible. So there will be no more safety issues about that bridge for hikers many, many years to come. And I think the town should be very, very grateful to that. I applaud and am deeply grateful to Dick, Rocco, Don, and the men and women who work our town so hard protecting hikers, making sure our trails are safe, building beautiful trails for us locals to use when the summer hikers are here. And I feel strongly that these men and women should be recognized and rewarded by the town of Green Mountain Falls for all their work. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have Rocco Blazi. Please state your name and address for the official record and you'll have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, hi, Rocco Blazi, 10955 Belvedere. I'd like to thank the trustees who were considering me for the Park and Rec and Open Space Board. We'll just have to see how it, it plays going out, going forward. I have been monitoring social media and I'm seeing a lot of calls for what can we do? And I just have to say that if, if people have the, the inclination and the energy, then if, if you think that the, the town governments cross the line, the next step would be to submit a petition for recall for certain individuals on the trustees. I don't have the energy to pursue that. I'm offering that out there as valuable guidance to our fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. That's great. And I mean that sincerely. I'd like to see people get involved with government. That's great. Who's next?
Next on the list is Liz Ives. Please state your name and your address for the official record.
Okay, this is Liz Ives. I live at 10790 Florence Avenue. A couple of things. One, I would like to talk about the, from last week or last month, where I was quoted as saying I didn't understand why the park, the bathrooms weren't open. And that is true, except that you implied that I just didn't understand. I'm a registered nurse. I do understand. I don't understand why you or our town is unable to provide hand sanitizer to open our bathrooms. So with that caveat, I would like to say that as a committee member for the planning or the comprehensive plan from when we, it was rewritten and I sat on a committee for that. And I was very much against us having a town manager because we can't afford one. But it was supposed to be to help write grants and to get the bathrooms open. It would, you know, the roads would get, you know, there'd be someone supervising, make sure the roads got taken care of. The parks would be taken care of and the bathroom would, or the pools would be taken care of. And yet I have seen none of these things occur after I sat on that committee. And I did vote way back when, we, when there was a vote put forth for a town manager. And I voted against that because we couldn't afford that. But yet now we have a town manager, admin guy, which he's wonderful. We need that. We have a marshal and we have two public works. I don't have an open pool. I don't have open bathrooms. I have a lake that has yet to be fixed. I have rocks and debris and a no dumping sign at the bottom of the hill across from our park. And I need to know why we're paying for this because that's my tax dollars, along with everyone else who lives in towns' tax dollars. And yet we're receiving nothing from that except maybe some codes being rewritten, but we don't have the money to pay for those, is what Jane said in the mayor forum. So I am very disappointed in the behavior of our Board of Trustees and our town manager. And I, it's pretty much a vote of no confidence for me for a town manager. So. Thanks, people.
All right, thanks, Liz. Who's next?
Next on the list, we have Dory, Dory G. Please state your name and your address for the official record. You'll have to unmute yourself.
It's Dory Guyan, 11055 Iona Avenue. I am personally appalled at the actions of the board this evening in removing Mr. Blazi. And as I tried to state just a couple of minutes ago, and my words were completely twisted, that I feel you now have a new problem because this statement was made that Mr. Blazi needed to be removed because he was guilty of being threatening. So now you will need to remove Mr. Gafford from the PRT because he has been heard and, and recorded as threatening hikers and residents if they appeared on Mount Dewey. That's much more blatant of a threat than what you're accusing Mr. Blazi of doing. Secondly, I am amazed that my emails to the trustees were construed as bullying. Many of my words were the quoted words stating that they were bullying. This is the comments that I did send. Small town government should not be petty. You should be ashamed of yourselves for not appreciating the time and talents of two such honorable, selfless, kind and giving individuals as Dick Bratton and Rocco Blazi. They have contributed so much as unpaid volunteers, something this town does not have enough of. And your response is to disband one committee and then expect their resignation from another. The resignation that has been received should be respectfully declined. I am embarrassed that our lovely community is repeatedly showing immature leadership that will put us in a bad light again in the county's in of the area. We, we get quoted in newspapers as being very immature individuals. And it's, it's really embarrassing that Green Mountain Falls hits the news with this kind of behavior. Sincerely, Dory Guyan.
All right, thank you.
Next on the list is Lamar Matthews. Please state your name and your address for the official record.
My name is Lamar Matthews. My address is 11145 Hondo. I feel like I've been in an alternate reality the past two meetings this evening included that I have attended. We had allegations against Rocco about bullying. We had witnesses who refuted this. We have a recording of a man threatening people with guns, guns. And I don't think anyone on this planet, if I described that situation, could imagine which one had just been removed from his committee. I think this has been a waste of continued waste of the resources of this town. In our last meeting, the mayor promised to bring the resolution that was needed for the legal paperwork required to hire the reserves and law enforcement help for Virgil to deal with the poorly behaved hikers, as was determined to be the underlying and primary problem in our last meeting. This statement that she made was left out of our minutes and left off the agenda for tonight's meeting. I haven't heard anything about hiring the help that we need to deal with the parking issues, to deal with the bad hiker issues. We have no initiative going forward to get paid parking in place to solve our parking issues and the income issues for the city. No answer to providing hand sanitizer and opening up public restrooms. Another issue that really should have been addressed and should be addressed is some kind of plan to get the very best out of the volunteers instead of seeking to punish and remove clearly dedicated volunteers. Companies work harder than this to pay, to save their paid employees who sometimes are viewed as difficult, but they're still contributing to the overall good of the company. Working with volunteers, I know, can be challenging, but we don't have the resources to have a bunch of paid employees. And management needs to figure out a way to successfully manage our volunteers. My final and biggest issue is that in the packet that was prepared for this evening, management admits that they have used hundred, and I quote, hundreds of combined hours of towns, town staff time, volunteer time, attorney hours and fees, community resources, tax dollars, and disrupted the forward momentum of operations. All of this focused on a single volunteer, Rocco. What a complete waste of all these resources that is under management and this board's fiduciary responsibility. Has, has everyone lost sight of all the issues I just listed and Dory mentioned right before me? Much worse than anything a volunteer could possibly do to damage this town is management's admitted list of wasteful spending of all of these town resources in the middle of a pandemic when the town can ill afford any of this.
All right, thank you.
The next person on the list is David Douglas. You would please state your name and address for the official record and unmute yourself. Well, the next person on the list is Mr. Clay Gafford. If you'd please state your name and your address for the official record.
Oh, mine's Clay Gafford in 7045 Oak Street. And I had a question for Jane. If last week, Mr. Bratton said that he had documentation at his home that the property, which the Teller County website says is national forest, that he had documentation that that land was given to the town of Green Mountain Falls and he was going to bring it into you. And I was wondering if you had received that information from Mr. Bratton yet.
I still have three minutes. I still have three minutes remaining.
Oh, we'll come, we'll come back to you, David Douglas. Sorry.
We didn't hear you at all, so we'll return there. Mr. Gafford, that was a question for Angie. And so I will ask Angie to, to talk about that when we get to reports. So I don't know. It wasn't given to me. But thank you for bringing that up again.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So we have not received that documentation.
Okay, that would be good to have.
Would be good to have.
All right, David Douglas. If you'd please state your name and address for the official record.
David Douglas, 11145 Hondo Avenue. I've been in business for over 40 years at executive management level and I've had the opportunity to observe a lot of work ethic and competence in, in managers and workers. And what I've observed over 40 years is that there are people who are high achievers and high performers. And invariably, they are accused of being bullies and having, and contributing to a hostile work environment. But it's always interesting to me that those accusers are typically the low achievers. And those and I think users of, of these people being bullies are the incompetent, no achievers. I, I just can't even imagine the case that was put forward by Rocco tonight being completely ignored. And the case that was made against him was unsubstantiated. So I think Rocco is right that the, the true response here tonight should be to call for a recall or ask for the resignation of the mayor, the mayor pro tem and the town. a recall or ask for the resignation of the mayor, the mayor pro tem, and the town manager asked for that. I am here to funds to support a recall election. I am also going to offer to Rocky, if he decides to pursue legal action for defamation, that I will gladly contribute to that cause as well. I just find it unbelievable that you would and then turn around in the same meeting and say you want him back on the on the committee because of all of his experience. And I just, and after you have said that he is a person who creates a hostile work environment. I mean, the inconsistencies of everything I've heard tonight are appalling, and it just points to the total incompetence of the management of this town. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next on the list, we have Judy Piazza. Please state your name and your address for the official record.
You did an amazing job.
Yes, so hard.
Hi, I'm Judith Piazza, 11160 Belvedere. And I'll speak to a few things. I've written all the board of trustees, I've written you all a letter, and I hope that you will read that and take it to heart. I find it depressing as well as really concerning that in these particular times where a small community like Green Mountain Falls could be setting a standard for community involvement and community unity, that we are in this position, in this situation, where we have almost once, one tenth of the town's permanent population, year-long population, on a board of trustees meeting is incredible. And that I find your ignoring of so many comments and so many comments that are being made, like just being slid over with a very weak alternative offered is just abominable to me. And I'm asking you all to take some of these comments that are being given to you to heart, to hear them deeply. Because for me, even this sense of protection that that our town, that we pay through our taxes for our protection, that is being totally ignored. As far as I'm concerned, when you appoint somebody to a committee who has blatantly threatened the town. How can you ignore that and not respond to that? I feel like Rocco has been scapegoated, and I appreciate really your responsibility. I know it's not easy. It's not easy, but maybe there needs to be mediation called in for for training for the board of trustees. If you're not recalled, or if the mayor is not recalled, or the town manager is not recalled, that there would be some training for skilled leadership to be able to lead with confidence and with the trust of all your residents to lead this town towards unity instead of divisiveness. So I'm I'm just appalled and I I don't know, it's like, it's so incompetent, as far as I'm concerned, what's happening. And I, again, I appreciate your your volunteerism, but maybe there needs to be some other training, some other skill levels and standards set so that we don't have scapegoating, lack of protection, we we don't have this ignoring of the public's comments. I've also written a letter about the signage at the bottom of Hondo, but I'm not going to bring that in right now. You'll see the letter, the town clerk and the town manager have it. Thank you for hearing me. Good night.
Thank you.
Next on the list, we have Mac Patron. Please state your name and your address for the official record.
Hi, my name is Mac Patron. I live at 10840 Pearl Street. And my comments are this. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess what a lot of volunteers have forgotten or ignored or never understood in the first place is that volunteers are just that, volunteers. They have no authority or decision-making ability. They serve and operate at the discretion of the people who accepted their offer to volunteer. In the case of Green Mountain Falls, they are accepted as volunteers by the board of trustees. The board and their designees make all the decisions, not the volunteers. The board was elected by all of the electors of the town to make decisions that benefit the whole town. If the board decides on an issue that volunteers disagree with, that's too bad, but the board is the legal authority. That's that. Keep in mind that the board must make decisions that they believe make sense for everyone in Green Mountain Falls, not just the planning commission, or the trails committee, or the fire mitigation committee, or any other volunteer group, or a private citizen, the whole town. Please understand that the board gets professional advice from the town attorney, the town manager, the town planner, the marshal, all paid professionals. So if you're a volunteer and you're upset by a decision of the board, keep in mind that they don't take any decision lightly and that their decisions are based on numerous perspectives. They make decisions based on fact, not emotion. As a planning, as a past planning commissioner and trustee, I can tell you that over the course of the last 43 years, I've lost friends, made some I hardly know, and have suffered losses in my business over some of the decisions I've been involved in. But when you're not on that side of the table, you either take it serious, when you're on that side of the table, you either take it seriously or you shouldn't shouldn't be there. There are always other ways to address your grievances, and you can go to the expense of a recall election, or wait for the next election cycle, or maybe others. It's your choice. Just keep in mind that whether you agree with the board or not, they think about all of us, they make, they took that oath. There is an election coming in April of 2022. Anybody who's feels like they need to, they need to get their 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 act together and get on the board of trustees, that's your time. If you want to spend the money to have a special election, that costs the town money. You can go ahead and do that, too, I suppose, just doesn't make an awful lot of sense. The last thing I want to say is, I'd like to wish Tony Bennett a happy 94th birthday. Thank you.
That was good.
Next on the list, we have Sherry Z. Do you please state your name and address for the official record? Sherry Zurgas? Not seeing her.
Mr. Barry?
Well, after her, it's Rebecca Oshkay. Rebecca Oshkay, if you please state your name and address for the official record. Well, I do not see Rebecca. Next up is Claudia, Claudia LA. Do you please state your name and address for the official record? All right, well, after that, it's Cactus Cadwell. Cactus Cadwell, would you please state your name and address for the official record?
Sorry about that. Eric Caldwell, 6840 Howard Street. And I guess the one thing I have to say about all this is that I was planning commission chairman for the majority of the time that Rocco was on the planning commission. And even though I have access to almost all the emails and everything from when I was on there, no one ever inquired about anything that went on with Rocco while I was there. No one like looked into it or anything. I don't know if they talked to anyone on the planning commission about the polls and whatever else was supposed to be going on and withholding information. We definitely didn't run things as with as tight a ship as we do now that we know what we're supposed to do back then. But it surprises me that people who were on the planning commission along with Rocco, they're left on good terms. They didn't ask us for any record of anything while he was there.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have Ally Slaton, Slaton. If you please state your name and address for the official record.
Hi, Victor, I think that must be a mistake. I didn't submit for comment.
All right. Marilyn, Marilyn Brown is next on the list. If you please state your name and address for the official record. And the last person on the list is Carolyn Bowers. Carolyn Bowers, if you please state your name and your address for the official record.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Bowers, 5220 41st Street, Northwest, Washington DC. Don't hold that against me, please. I'm also one of three administrators on the Green Mountain Falls Facebook page, and I just wanted to use this time to, can you all see me? I don't seem to be on the grid, but my main message is to please join the Green Mountain Falls Political Politics page, Green Mountain Falls Politics Facebook page on Facebook to make your voice heard. The Green Mountain Falls, people use the the regular Green Mountain Falls Facebook page as their list serve for just about anything. And we allow political discussion this time, but it really, really belongs on the politics page, and I would urge you as soon as possible to ask to join that. Thank you.
Okay, well, that's all. Moving on to item seven, which is correspondence. We have all seen Am I there? Is anyone hearing me? All right, item seven is correspondence. We have seen our correspondence for the week. Item eight is reports. Margaret, do you have any report?
Um, no.
Johnny, do you have anything to report?
Just that I I think that, you know, in light of, there's been a kind of a lot of a lot of stuff that's been very negative put out in in our community. I just want to focus on some positives to end with. You know, there are several grant opportunities right now for us to create some new projects with parks and open space and trails. And so I'd like to try and focus on on moving forward with bettering our our community. I think that Angie, we could try and set up a meeting, is that correct, of the the new advisory committee?
Absolutely, and I've already put some feelers out there about dates, but I'll reach out to these folks specifically, and we'll hopefully we can get something rolling either the this first Thursday, which is just a couple of days from now, or the third Thursday of the month is kind of the schedule that we're, I think we were working with.
And whatever date that's that's chosen, that will be an open meeting as well, will be posted in the same spot, and everyone's encouraged to attend that as well to give input.
All right, thank you, and thank you for taking it on with parks. I think that'll be new and dynamic and a good move forward. Catherine?
Yes, I'd like to just add to what Diana said about grants and moving forward. I I think it might be beneficial for us to have a grant workshop so that everybody knows who's working on what and what opportunities are available, a timeline, and kind of coordinate all those things so that we're not doing any duplications. And, you know, we're we're clear about where we're what's being addressed, what needs to be addressed, how those things might dovetail with each other in terms of you know, matching funds and and those kinds of things. And I know I've mentioned in the past that the Chamber of Commerce is looking into the the COVID grants, and we should have some information going forward. We haven't had much response to that outreach, but I'll, you know, give you all the information I have with that, Angie, and decide if that's something that that we can pursue.
Sounds great. I look forward to working with you on that more.
All right, Catherine, thank you. I'll look forward to seeing when that comes up. I'll let you know what I know about grants. You can have all my old paperwork, it'd be very exciting, I'm sure.
Yeah, thanks, Jane.
Sure, I appreciate it. Grant writing is a lot of work, and it can be very nuanced, and I just really appreciate anyone who takes that on, that's always something. Let's see, Chris, do you have any report?
Not a report per se. That's sounds really great on on the the grants, by the way. I was just curious if we had a hard and fast date on those applications that we're going to be considering at the next meeting, just so that we don't have any, well, these are coming and these aren't, and if we could have a hard date, maybe next Wednesday or next Friday, or some from that date where we can kind of cut off those applications and and consider what's been submitted at the time. Just a thought.
I would suggest, that's a good idea, I would suggest the Wednesday before our next meeting, so that way it has time to go in the packet, and then we should have time to review.
Right, that's the 12th, then?
I have no idea, because I don't have my
Our next meeting is scheduled for September 1st, and then so the closeout date for that would be the September 26th day.
I think that should be plenty of time.
August.
Yeah, August, sorry.
All right, yes.
We don't know. All right. As far as a report, we have worded porta potty, so it should be in place. The parking and road survey is underway. I'm taking away some of Angie's report probably. Angie's working on getting paid help for Virgil. That wasn't a resolution or ordinance on my part, that is within staff. I did have a chance to speak with our state representative, Terry Carver. She was down here for Rock Day, and we talked quite good about fire mitigation because she's passionate, and I am as well about getting that done. You know, she has done one thing that should help us all and keep an eye out for it on the government side. They have, they did pass, I believe it was several million in the state government for fire mitigation. So if we can get our hands on that, especially if we can do it working with CUSP and working with the forestry up above us and working with utilities, maybe we can get somewhere with taking care of our parks land up above that we have all noticed has a lot of dead and dying trees. So hopefully we can get working on that. The only other thing I would ask is that we do look at our calendars and talk about training, and we should probably look at scheduling a retreat for someday. So that's just a a calendar note. Angie, do you have a report?
I don't have anything to add. I don't have anything to add.
All right, Victor, do you have anything?
Uh, I do not have a report at this time.
Thank you for running this meeting. Um, I don't know if Julia is on. But hearing nothing, I would assume not. Virgil, do you have a report? And hearing nothing, I guess I would assume no. Or if there is nothing further, we will adjourn this meeting. The time is 9:00 PM. And thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Oh, hold on, just, hold on before you all dive out. I have a note here that, um, Mike Lowen has something he'd like to say. So if he, if you're still on, Mr. Lowen, we'll let you stay and say something, and then we will adjourn again. Adjourn twice.
Huge, okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you.
Hello?
I can hear you, go ahead.
Okay. Anyway, Mike Lowen, I'm temporarily down at the rehab hospital, so I don't have an address up there. Someone, or some people are signing my name or my organization's name and representing themselves as myself. And it, it starts out with these grants. Apparently somebody thinks that they're the Ute Pass Triangle Chamber. They're not. I own the copyright. I own the trademark. Anybody in that said organization has been informed that the relationship between myself and them has been canceled. It is documented down at the recording recorder's office. I would gladly send you the number. Additionally, uh, the town manager apparently thinks somebody died and made her queen. Well, they haven't. She went ahead and licensed to a group that does not own any of the properties that she licensed against my specific orders to cancel. And then she had the nerve to apparently get insurance that certainly doesn't know anything about a health certificate from the director of, uh, public health that they didn't give a permit or, or an approval. And guess what? They went ahead and had the festival specifically against my copyright, my trademark. I can prove that it's my trademark. I own it. I've never sold it to anybody. And if you want to bring up the registration, hell, I registered Margaret as a beauty queen. Yeah, so take it for what it's worth. I'm sorry, but the town, the town manager has no experience in trademarks. Obviously no experience in any kind of business particular to trademarks. Angie, she just goes off.
Okay, um, I can't hear you anymore. I guess that was, um, the end of that. Um, I also wanted to say thank you for a successful Bronc Day. I think that was a good event. Uh, small as it was, I think it was still very well intended and very well appreciated. Warren?
Thank you. And that's probably what I could comment and report on. I was very pleased with how Bronc Day turned out, um, with the guidance we received from the county health department. You know, we followed everything we told them we, we were going to do, you know? And it just, it was just really, really good. And, and people social distanced. They were respectful with masks, so, so it was a successful event.
That's good. So, thank you again, everybody. Thank you for all the participation. Thank you for your thoughtful comments. I do appreciate all of them, and I think the board appreciates all of them as well, although I can't speak for them. Thank you for your time, and we will adjourn at 9:05.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.